भूतले श्रीमते भक्ति वेदांत स्वामीनिति नामिने नमो मृष्णो पदाया कृष्णा पृष्ठाया भूतले श्रीमते भक्ति वेदांत स्वामीनिति नामिने नमस्ते सरस्वते देवे गौरवानी प्रचारिने निर्विषेषा शुन्यवादी पश्चत देश तारिने नमस्ते सरस्वते देवे गौरवानी प्रचारिने निर्विषेषा शुन्यवादी पश्चत देश तारिने जयो श्री कृष्णा चैतन्य प्रभु नित्य नान्दा श्री अद्वेद गदाधार शिवा साधि गौर भक्त बिंदा जयो श्री कृष्णा चैतन्य प्रभु नित्य नान्दा श्री अद्वेद गदाधार शिवा साधि गौर भक्त बिंदा हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे हरे जयो राधा श्याम सुंदर राधा श्याम सुंदर राधे जयो राधा श्याम सुंदर राधा श्याम सुंदर राधे जयो राधा गोविंद राधा गोविंद राधे जयो राधा मधन मोहन राधा मधन मोहन राधे जयो राधा मधन मोहन राधा मधन मोहन राधे जयो राधा गोपीनत राधा गोपीनत राधे जयो राधा गोपीनत राधा गोपीनत राधे जयो राधा गोपीनत राधा गोपीनत राधे जयो कृष्णा बलराम कृष्णा बलराम कृष्णा बलराम जयो कृष्णा बलराम जयो कृष्णा बलराम कृष्णा बलराम कृष्णा बलराम जयो कृष्णा बलराम जयो विंदा वन धाम विंदा वन धाम विंदा वन धाम जयो विंदा वन धाम जयो विंदा वन धाम विंदा वन धाम विंदा वन धाम जयो विंदा वन धाम जयो गोरानिताई 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 जयो गोरानिताई जयो गोरानिताई 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 जयो गोरानिताई जयो जयो प्रभुपात प्रभुपात जयो जयो प्रभुपात जयो जयो प्रभुपात प्रभुपात जयो जयो प्रभुपात जयो जयो गुरुदेव 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 जयो जयो गुरुदेव जयो जयो गुरुदेव 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 जयो जयो गुरुदेव गौर प्रेमनद्दे
हरिंग रिमोट प्रोपाद की जय नंत कोटि वेस्ट उब्रिंद की जय तकोर हरि कृष्णा थैंक यू रानी प्रभु थैंक यू शिवानी माता जी विजय माता जी थैंक यू सो मच हरि कृष्णा सो वेलकम डियर डिवोटीज एंड विश्य ऑल अन वेरी हैप्पी प्रोपाद डिसएपरियंस डे सो डुडे वी हैव अन वेरी स्पेशल प्रोग्राम फॉर ऑल ऑफ यू वी आर गोइंग तू हियर इलेक्चर फ्रॉम इस ओलिंग एस पक्ति चारों महाराज विच यू गिव ऑन ऑन दिस अकॉर्डियो रेदर ही स्पोक अबाउट प्रोपाद एंड सेड हो तू कॉन्कर डेथ एंड इन डेट लेक्चर महाराज शेयर्स हिस पास टाइम्स विद प्रोपाद ड्यूरिंग इस लास्ट डेज़ हाउ वाज एंड इट्स वेरी हार्ट टचिंग तू तू गो थ्रू दिस होल एक्सपीरियंस अगेन और एक्चुअली एपीरियंस डे एंड डिसएपरियंस डे फॉर वैश्नव इस सेम यूजुअली वी सी एपीरियंस डेज़ एंड डिसएपरियंस डेज़ आर सेलिब्रेटेड इन अन नॉर्मल मेनर इन अन डिफरेंट मेनर सो वी फील वेरी हैप्पी ऑन डी एपीरियंस डे इट्स अन कॉज ऑफ सेलिब्रेशन बट व्हेन वी सी डिसएपरियंस डे व्हेन सम्बैडी लीव्स अस देन इट इस अन मैटर ऑफ यू नो इट इस इट ब्रिंग सैडनेस इट डोसन ब्रिंग हैप्पीनेस बट जो वैश्नव है उनके एपीरियंस डे और डिसएपरियंस डे आर बोथ बोथ सेलिब्रेटेड यूजुअली वी डोंट सेलिब्रेट सम्बैडीज डेथ एनिवर्सरी बट वी सेलिब्रेट वैश्नव एपीरियंस एंड डिसएपरियंस डे बिकॉज़ वी नो की डेट जो हमने स्लोग पढ़ा है जन्म कर्म चमेत देव्यम एवं यो वेती तत्वता त्यागतो देहम पुनर्जन्म नेती मामेती स्वर्जना तो जन्म कर्म सम स चमेत देव्यम इट मींस डेट बोथ डी यू नो टेकिंग बर्थ ऑफ ए वैश्नव एंड व्हाट ही डूज़ इस बोथ ट्रांसिडेंटल दे आर नॉट फ्रॉम दिस वर्ल्ड एंड देयर एपीरियंस एंड डिसएपरियंस इस अलसो गिवन लाइक सनसेट एंड सनराइज़ सो वन अप्रिशिएट बोथ जो सूर्य डूबता है तब भी जो सूर्य उठता है वी अप्रिशिएट बोथ तू डी सिमिलर मेनर फॉर वैश्नव अलसो वी वी अप्रिशिएट बोथ दे आर कमिंग एंड दे आर गोइंग बिकॉज़ वी नो व्हेन दे आर गोइंग हम जैसे भी हम लिखते हैं नित्य लीला परिषद यू नो पार्षद लाइक दिस सो विच मींस दे दे आर एंटर डी नित्य लीला डी अटेनल पास टाइम्स ऑफ यू नो डी लॉड सो इन इधर वे दे दे इस ऑस्पिशियसनेस बोथ साइड एंड इट अलसो ब्रिंग्स गौर या प्रिंसिपल ऑफ यूनियन एंड सेपरेशन अलसो वन ऑफ डी नेम ऑफ कृष्णा इस मधन मोहन एंड मधन मोहन हैस डिफरेंट मीनिंग्स और एक जो मधन मोहन का मीनिंग निकलता है मधन मींस यूनियन एंड मोहन मींस सेपरेशन सो डेट मींस यू नो ही इंजॉयज बोथ डरसस ऑफ मीटिंग एंड सेपरेशन सो सिमिलरली वैश्नव अलसो वी हैव दिस मीटिंग एंड सेपरेशन बोथ सो आई वोंट टेक मोर टाइम एंड नो वी विल हियर दिस वंडरफुल लेक्चर जस्ट हियर इट केयरफुली एंड देन वी आर वी विल हियर अन शॉर्ट कीर्तन फॉर 10 मिनट्स एट अन वेरी स्पेशल प्लेस वी विल सी एंड इन डी एंड दिस लेक्चर इस अराउंड 1 आर एंड देन 10 मिनट्स कीर्तन एंड देन फाइनली वी विल हियर वेरी वेरी यूनिक प्रोस्पेक्टिव ऑन हो व्हाट तू डू इफ वी वांट तू मीट प्रोपाद हो तू मीट हिम वी विल हियर सो नो वी विल हियर ओवर तू यू रानी प्रभु कैन वी हैव डी लेक्चर
कृष्णा पृष्ठाय भूतले श्रीमते भक्ति वेदांत स्वामीनिति नामिने नमस्ते हरिष्टि देवे गौरवानी प्रचारिने निर्विषेष शुन्यवादी पश्चत देश तारिने श्री कृष्णा चैतन्य प्रभु नित्य नान्दा श्री अद्वेद गदाधार शिवा श्री गौर भक्त बिंदा हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम राम हरे कृष्णा सो हो इस एवरीबॉडी वेरी हैप्पी तू बी विथ यू ऑल अगेन आई जस्ट कैम बैक तू अमेरिका यस्टरडे एंड इट वाज अन लॉन्ग फ्लाइट फ्रॉम मुंबई तू फ्रॉम मुंबई तू न्यूयॉर्क न्यूयॉर्क न्यूज़ जीसी से अन वेरी 16 आवर्स फ्लाइट सो यू कैन वेल इमागिन माय फिजिकल शॉप बट आई होप डेट आई विल बी एबल तू गिव यू सम अंडरस्टैंडिंग ऑफ शिल्ला प्रभुपाद तू डील विथ डी टॉपिक इट टॉट अस हो तू कॉन्कर डेथ डेट्स व्हाट शिल्ला प्रभुपाद टॉट अस थ्रू इस ओन एग्जांपल शिल्ला प्रभुपाद वाज डी परफेक्ट एग्जांपल इन रिलेट इन रिलेशन तू हरिदास ठाकुर श्री चैतन्य महाप्रभु मेंशन डेट व्हाइल यू प्रीच प्रचार यू डू प्रचार यू डू प्रीचिंग बट आते डी सेम टाइम यू एक्ट तू तू इंडिकेट तू शो पीपल हो तू प्रैक्टिस दिस प्रोसेस ऑफ कृष्णा कॉन्शसनेस एंड यस शिल्ला प्रभुपाद टॉट अस हो तू बिकम अन परफेक्ट डिवोटी परफेक्टली सरेंडर्ड तू कृष्णा एंड लाइक आज आई टोल्ड डी अदर डे डे बिफोर यस्टरडे व्हेन आई वाज स्पीकिंग डेट आई कैम तू कृष्णा कॉन्शसनेस क्वाइट लेट आई कैम एट अन टाइम व्हेन शिल्ला प्रभुपाद हैड मोर देन 10,000 फॉलोवर्स एंड 6,000 इनिशिएटेड डिसाइपल्स सो यू कैन वेल इमागिन हो एवरीवन वाज डाइंग तू मीट शिल्ला प्रभुपाद एंड आते डी रिजल्ट ऑफ डेट शिल्ला प्रभुपाद सीनियर डिवोटीज सीनियर डिसाइपल्स सीनियर लीडर्स ऑफ अन मूवमेंट है तू प्रोटेक्ट शिल्ला प्रभुपाद लाइक बी वेरी केयरफुल हो विल बी एबल तू कम नियर हिम हो विल बी एबल तू एंड फॉर सम रियर बाय कृष्णा जस मर्सी ड्यू तू सम गुड फॉर्ट्यून आई एक्चुअली हैव डी गुड फॉर्ट्यून तू कम क्वाइट क्लोज तू शिल्ला प्रभुपाद एंड डेट हैपन्ड बिकॉज़ ड्यूरिंग माय फर्स्ट मीटिंग विथ शिल्ला प्रभुपाद ही आस्ट मी तू ट्रांसलेट हिस बुक्स इन तू बेंगाली एंड डेट एक्चुअली क्रिएटेड माय गुड फॉर्ट्यून एंड आई हैव एक्सेस तू शिल्ला प्रभुपाद विद डेट एक्सक्यूज डेट आई हैव तू शो व्हाट आई ट्रांसलेटेड एंड बिकॉज़ प्रभुपाद वाज वेरी पर्टिकुलर वाथ बेंगाली ट्रांसलेशन बिकॉज़ ऑल डी बुक्स वर इन बेंगाली चैतन्य महाप्रभु वाज ऑल डी लिटरेचर्स वर अवेलेबल इन बेंगाली सो ही वाज ट्रांसलेटिंग इन बेंगाली है तू बी वेरी वेरी अप तू डी क्वालिटी अप तू डी एक्सपेक्टेशन अप तू डी स्टैंडर्ड सो व्हेन आई इस तू ट्रांसलेट शिल्ला प्रभु आई इस तू टेक इट तू शिल्ला प्रभुपाद एंड शिल्ला प्रभुपाद इस तू गाइड मी करेक्ट मी अप्रिशिएट व्हेन आई डिड समथिंग राइटली एंड देन ग्रैडुएली शिल्ला प्रभुपाद मेड मी हिस सेक्रेटरी फॉर इंडियन अफेयर्स एंड आई मूव्ड इन तू डी रूम जस्ट नेक्स्ट तू शिल्ला प्रभुपाद शिवतमाकृष्ण महाराज विच वाज डी सेक्रेटरी इस रूम सो आई हैव डी ओपोचुनिटी तू बी विथ शिल्ला प्रभुपाद ऑल डी टाइम एंड डेट वाज इन मायपुर फ्रॉम मायपुर शिल्ला प्रभुपाद वें तू बॉम्बे एंड इन बॉम्बे आई हैव डी गुड फॉर्ट्यून ऑफ इवन कुकिंग फॉर शिल्ला प्रभुपाद एंड डेट गिव मी सम मोर सर्विस मोर तो ओपोचुनिटी तू गेट मोर क्लोज तू शिल्ला प्रभुपाद एंड एंड आज इट इस आई वाज विथ शिल्ला प्रभुपाद ऑल डी टाइम नो व्हेन शिल्ला प्रभुपाद वाज इन बॉम्बे प्रभुपाद जस हेल्थ कंडीशन वाज नॉट सो गुड एक्चुअली शिल्ला प्रभुपाद जस हेल्थ कंडीशन डिटोरियरेटेड स्टार्टेड तू डिटोरियरेट डिटोरियरेट व्हेन शिल्ला प्रभुपाद वाज इन मायपुर लाइक एंड सो व्हेन ही वें तू बॉम्बे हिस हेल्थ कंडीशन कंटिन्यूड डी सेम वे एंड देन वंदे तू वेरी इंपॉर्टेंट पर्सन्स कैम तू मीट शिल्ला प्रभुपाद दे वाज क्वाइट क्लोज तू शिल्ला प्रभुपाद एंड फ्रॉम टाइम तू टाइम दे इस तू कम एंड सी शिल्ला प्रभुपाद अल्लोह दे इन स्टे इन बॉम्बे बट व्हेन एवर दे कैम तू बॉम्बे दे मेड दिस पर्सन दिस तू पर्सन्स वर श्रीम इस डी श्रीमण नारायण ही वाज डी एक्स गवर्नर ऑफ मद्रास And his brother-in-law, Ram Krishn Bajaj, he was the head of the Bajaj Industries that manufacture scooters and motor vehicle things. They were two very important persons actually, but they were very close to Shilpa Prabhupada, very appreciative of Shilpa Prabhupada. And so they came to see Shilpa Prabhupada, then when they saw that Shilpa Prabhupada's health condition was not so good, they suggested that Prabhupada went on a, on a change. Meaning change of weather, change of environment, change of location. And while they are discussing, because they felt that by going to a different place, Shilpa Prabhupada's health will improve. And when they mentioned about Rishikesh, Prabhupada liked that idea. Prabhupada said, he never went to Rishikesh. So he liked the idea of going to Rishikesh and Rishikesh is actually at the foothills of the Himalayas. And very beautiful place on the bank of the Ganges. And it's one of the important places of pilgrimage. So when Prabhupada mentioned that he was willing to go to Rishikesh, then these persons made the arrangement for Shilpa Prabhupada. They made the arrangement in the best house in Rishikesh, right on the bank of the Ganges, a two-story building. And very beautiful, obviously belonged to some very wealthy person. And few of us, four of us traveled with Shilpa Prabhupada. Tamil Krishna Maharaj, Upendra Prabhu, Tamil Krishna Maharaj's servant, Gauri Das Prabhu and myself. Four of us traveled with Shilpa Prabhupada from Bombay to Delhi. And then from Delhi, we drove to Rishikesh. And anyway, Shilpa Prabhupada liked the idea and mostly all of us liked the place very much. It was the Ganges, on the bank of the Ganges. And the Ganges is very different there, it's not so wide, but very strong current, that's right, coming right after the Himalayan mountain and that's where it's touching the plain land. And but I used to cook for Shilpa Prabhupada at the time. So they used to go sporting in the Ganges, swimming in the Ganges. And while I was cooking for Shilpa Prabhupada, but after cooking, I used to serve the prashat to Shilpa Prabhupada. And then I also used to join them. And so this is how we are having a beautiful time in Rishikesh. Then one day, all of a sudden, a huge storm hit Rishikesh. It was unbelievable, all this while, the weather was so beautiful, bright sunshine. And because it was at the foothills of Himalaya, although it was midsummer, but it was very, very pleasant and Ganga was like so refreshing. The Ganga water, I mean, you can see, it's really nectar. Because as soon as you take a dip in Ganga, you literally feel rejuvenated. And the cold water, water, it's so pure, so beautiful. So, but then all of a sudden, the weather turned. It was incredibly powerful storm and along with that came torrents of rain. And, and there was no electricity because the electric poles got, got uprooted. So the electric line, electric supply got interrupted. So it was dark and especially at night, you used to feel the dark influence of that place. You know, like when it rains and you know, like you can hear the sound of the wind raging actually. And so firstly, two days, it continued like that, storm and rain. And then at night, when it continued like that, Shilpa Prabhupada, that time actually, the storm stopped and rain also stopped. And at night, I used to be with Shilpa Prabhupada. Actually, one of us used to be with Shilpa Prabhupada all the time. And stay awake because just in case Prabhupada needed us. So my shift was from 12 to 2. And so I was attending Shilpa Prabhupada, Prabhupada was lying in bed. Then Prabhupada called me. So I lifted the mosquito net and leaned to Shilpa Prabhupada. And then Prabhupada said, the time has come for me to leave my body. I want to leave my body in Vrindavan. Please take me to Vrindavan immediately. I mean, you can well imagine my condition, you know, like when Prabhupada started to speak like that, I just literally started to shake all over. And I just ran downstairs and woke up Tamil Krishna Maharaj, told him what Prabhupada told me. And Tamil Krishna Maharaj also jumped out of his bed and ran upstairs. He, Prabhupada told him the same thing. The time has come for me to leave my body. I want to leave my body in Vrindavan, so please take me to Vrindavan immediately. So that night only, we packed everything. None of us spoke, just silently packed everything. Prabhupada's things first and then our things and then we went to Vrindavan in the morning. I'm sorry, first we stopped in Delhi for the night. And the next morning, we left for Vrindavan. So when we arrived in Vrindavan, all of a sudden, the devotees got the news that Prabhupada was coming. So they all were ecstatic that Prabhupada was coming. So you can well imagine the ecstasy that was prevailing there. And but then Prabhupada mentioned why he came. After the darshan of the deities, Prabhupada walked to his room, all the devotees followed him chanting Kirtan. And they came to the room and there Prabhupada mentioned why he came. And they, I mean, that was something like they were so ecstatic and all of a sudden, the whole scene changed. And they just started to cry, they just broke down crying. And Prabhupada started to explain how, how death is inevitable for everyone. And he quoted that verse, dehi nashmin jata diye, ko maram jo banam jara. Like this body changes from childhood to youth. Ko maram jo banam jara. Then eventually, it becomes old. And then tatha dehanta ra pra tir. The body changes, but dehi na, dehi na. The owner of the body doesn't change. The body changes from childhood to youth to old age. Body is continuously changing and we visibly notice that. But whose body is changing? The soul's body, soul is the proprietor of the body. And the soul is immortal. And in this way, Prabhupada just explained that how he, you know, we have to accept that all of us at some point someday, sooner or later, have to leave our bodies. But dhira sthatra namui hati. Dhira, one who is situated in knowledge, one who has become steady receiving this knowledge, he doesn't become bewildered, mui hati. He doesn't become overwhelmed. It was such a beautiful, beautiful lecture or beautiful words of wisdom from Shilpa Prabhupada. But still, everyone was feeling heavy and they all left Prabhupada's room. When everyone left the room, Prabhupada called me. And he told me to stop cooking for him. And he told me, from now on, you don't cook for me. What's the use of cooking when there is no appetite? And he told me not to cook for him and not to force him to eat. Don't cook for me and don't force me to eat. What's the point in eating when there is no appetite? So when Prabhupada spoke like that, I could, I could realize that this is how Prabhupada was going to leave his body. He will stop eating, just like Parikshit Maharaj, he will stop eating, he will stop drinking. And this is how he would leave his body. When we stopped in Delhi, Tamil Krishna Maharaj called, called the GBC there. Anyway, the name is not coming back now. So he told him to inform everybody that, that Prabhupada is going to Vrindavan to leave his body. And so the news spread and the devotees came. And when the devotees arrived in Vrindavan, they had a meeting. And in that meeting, they decided that Prabhupada is a pure devotee of Krishna. And if Prabhupada wanted something, then Krishna will fulfill his desire. So, so, and also they mentioned that we are so young in Krishna consciousness. And if you leave us, what will happen to us? We will become orphans. And so collectively, they came to Prabhupada's room and they, they presented it to Shilpa Prabhupada. I was not there in that meeting, Tamil Krishna Maharaj was there, so I had to be with Shilpa Prabhupada. So I was in Prabhupada's room, so I heard that later on, what actually happened. Then when they came, they presented it to Shilpa Prabhupada. And then Prabhupada just accepted that. Said, if that's what you want, then you can pray to Krishna. Krishna, if you so desire, then please let Shilpa Prabhupada stay with us. And Prabhupada, when Prabhupada accepted, I used to have a glass of fruit juice freshly made for just with an expectation that if someday, sometime, Shilpa Prabhupada wanted to drink something, he didn't want to eat anything but of this, if he wanted to drink something, then so I was having some juice ready and I remember I had a glass of omega-1 juice ready next to the table. And next to Prabhupada's bed on a table. So I just reached out and gave it to Shilpa Prabhupada and Shilpa Prabhupada drank it. And I didn't wait for, you know, Prabhupada's permission to ask, Prabhupada's permission to cook. I just went straight to the kitchen and started to cook for Shilpa Prabhupada. And then I served Shilpa Prabhupada. And Prabhupada tried, you know, accepted it, like sitting on his bed, I put a table, a small table, put the plate there and Prabhupada tried to eat and I could see. Like I said, Prabhupada said, what's the point in eating when there is no appetite? I could see that Prabhupada didn't have any. But then gradually, Prabhupada started to eat on the second or third day. Shilpa Prabhupada took some prashad. And Prabhupada asked me, do you know where is Gopinath Bazaar? So I told Prabhupada, this is my first time in Vrindavan, I don't know any place here. And I didn't even step out of the temple premises, but tell me what you want. Vrindavan is a small place, I can find out where is Gopinath Bazaar. Then Prabhupada said, go to Gopinath Bazaar and there is an Ayurvedic doctor, his name is Banamali Kabiraj. So you tell him about me, he knows me and you tell him that I wanted him to treat me. So I went and it was not difficult to find him. I saw in a small, little room, which was his pharmacy or, you know, clinic or whatever you want to call it. Like small little room, behind the table, a very old man was sitting. Prabhupada was old, but this person was much older than Shilpa Prabhupada. And he was quite frail, small, thin, frail. So when I told him about Prabhupada, he recognized Shilpa Prabhupada from early days. And when, but when I told him that Prabhupada wanted him to treat him, then he said, in that case, Prabhupada have to come here. And I told him that Prabhupada is not in a position to come, to travel. So, and I said, you please come. And he said, look, I just come to this chamber to treat some patients and then I go to my room, my room, my house. This was where, you know, the limitation of my movement. But I begged him and begged him and finally, he agreed to come. And so I took him in a rickshaw and I could see that the rickshaw ride was painful for him. Because Vrindavan roads are not smooth, it's quite bouncy, quite rocky and full of potholes. He came to see Shilpa Prabhupada, check Shilpa Prabhupada. And then after checking Shilpa Prabhupada, he told me that, see, there is one problem. The medicine that I would give him has to be freshly prepared. So I told him, please, we'll make arrangement for you to stay here, so I can just stay here. In our guest house, we'll make arrangements. So he then, he said declined, no, I can't stay here. I have to go home. So then I finally told him, then why don't you show me how to make that medicine? So I'm sure he accepted that. So he took me to the field and he showed me two, two leaves of two plants. One is called patharkuchi and the other is called punarnaba. And so he showed me the plant and he picked the leaves and took it to Prabhupada's kitchen and crushed them, made the crude juice extract and then he added some, two salts. One was white and the other was pink. And so he demonstrated to Shilpa Prabhupada. And this is how he started to treat Prabhupada. And he wanted me to give that medicine three times a day. And Prabhupada's condition started to improve from that. And when Prabhupada's health condition improved, Prabhupada wanted to go to the West. His plan was from India, he would go to London. From London, he would go to New York, New York to Getanari, Getanari to Los Angeles. And from Los Angeles, he would go to Hawaii. So, so this is the thing, like Prabhupada, you see, he decided to leave his body and come to Vrindavan. But when his health condition improved, he didn't just want to lie in bed. Prabhupada also mentioned once that a warrior doesn't die on bed. It's not glorious for a warrior to die on bed. The glory of a warrior is to die in the battlefield. And for Prabhupada, the field for preaching was his battlefield. Later on, one of Prabhupada's very intimate god brothers, Shilpa Shighar Maharaj, told me, Prabhupada actually wrote to him, what if he left his body away from India? And Shri Dam Maharaj's reply was that wherever you are, that is Vrindavan. Whether you leave your body in Vrindavan or in the outside of Vrindavan, outside of India, doesn't matter. Wherever you are, that is Vrindavan because Krishna is there with you. So this is how Shilpa Prabhupada actually was showing, like he, he, his health condition improved and he just wanted to leave and go to the West and preach. Because he felt that preaching in the West is what is needed. India is, he used to say, fifty percent of Indians are Krishna conscious. And today we can see that. In India, Krishna consciousness is expanding by itself. And so, but in the West, there is a need to urge people, motivate people, guide people to become devotees of Krishna. And so Prabhupada then decided to go to the West. And but unfortunately, when Prabhupada arrived in London, his health condition deteriorated. Prabhupada had a minor operation and he decided to go back to India. When Prabhupada left for the West, I went back to Mayapur. And one day I got a telegram from Tama Krishna Maharaj saying, Prabhupada wanted you to come to Brindavan immediately. So the next morning, I took a flight and came to Brindavan, came to Delhi. And came to Brindavan in the evening. I was told that Prabhupada had some coughing and they have given him some expectorant, cough medicine. And this cough medicine makes you sleep. And so Upendra Prabhu immediately took me to Prabhupada's room. And he told me everything, that Prabhupada had some, Prabhupada was coughing, he had some mucus. And he told what happened in London. And then at one point, Prabhupada was lying on his bed, it was semi-dark. And Upendra and I were sitting far away towards them, next to the door actually, to that room. And when Prabhupada woke up coughing, Upendra Prabhu went to Shilpa Prabhupada and he told him that I came. That Prabhupada wanted to see me immediately. So I just went to Shilpa Prabhupada. Prabhupada told me to help him sit up on the bed. So I helped Prabhupada to sit up and propped him up with some pillows. When I was helping him to sit up, I could see Prabhupada became so emaciated. And Prabhupada's body was already very, very emaciated. But now it was kind of, it's unbelievable, so emaciated. And I told Prabhupada, Prabhupada, you became so thin. And Prabhupada said, yes, now this body is just a bag of, a set of bones in a bag of skin. And it was literally like that, a set of bones and a bag of skin, as if there was no flesh. And so that was Prabhupada's condition. And I went to Banamali Kabiraj. Now, Banamali Kabiraj already started to come and treat, but I went and met with him. And Banamali Kabiraj told me that, that his condition he said that I wish he didn't leave. Because Banamali Kabiraj told me that when he heard that Prabhupada was going to leave for the West, he said, please don't let him go. This medicine I'm giving, it's working. And when the winter comes, his health condition improved considerably. At that time, I'll give him a very strong, very effective tonic, Ayurvedic tonic called Math Makaradhaj. And the cold of the winter also will help him retain it and that will rejuvenate. But he was, and I was also lamenting, why didn't I? When he told me not to let Prabhupada go, why didn't I insist? And actually, that was the thing, like when Prabhupada decided to do something, nobody could stop him. What to speak of his disciples? We are not in a position at all to, to tell Shilpa Prabhupada what to do and what not to do. Anyway, so Prabhupada, Banamali Kabiraj just said that my old medicine is not working, it's pointless treating him now. So he stopped treating. And but the amazing thing is, although Prabhupada's health condition was so frail, but Prabhupada didn't stop translating. Prabhupada didn't stop advising the leading devotees how to manage affairs of his kani. And so this was Prabhupada, like apparently his body was reduced to just a set of bone in a bag of skin. But he continued practically doing everything. Like the, these are recorded, all these conversations, most of them are recorded. And you can see Prabhupada was speaking, although his voice is faint, but his consciousness is so clear. And he was continuing to translation. I'm sure you have seen the video where one devotee used to hold the microphone in front of Shilpa Prabhupada's mouth. And Pradumna Prabhu used to read the verses from Shriman Bhagavam, from Tenth Kirtu. And, and Prabhupada used to translate and give the purport, bhaktiya purport. And when you read that, and you see that, those are such amazing, amazing purports. Brahma Mohan Lila, belterment of Lord Brahma. Such an amazing purport. So you can see Prabhupada was not in his body. Prabhupada was not functioning on the platform of his body. Prabhupada was performing from his pure spiritual identity. And seeing Shilpa Prabhupada, that became very clear. And so still, like we were trying to hope that Prabhupada's health condition would improve. And we are praying to Krishna, Shrimudirada Rameen. So one morning, Prabhupada mentioned that he had a dream that he saw a Ramanuja Kabiraj, a Kabiraj, meaning Ayurvedic doctor from Ramanuja Sampradaya, was making Makaradhaj for him. Makaradhaj is the medicine that Banamali Kabiraj wanted to give Shilpa Prabhupada in winter. And when Prabhupada's health condition was much better. But Prabhupada said that he saw an Ayurvedic Ramanuja Kabiraj was creating, making Makaradhaj for him and we got an impression that if we can get a Ramanuja Kabiraj to make Makaradhaj, then Prabhupada's health condition will improve. So I went in search for a Ramanuja Kabiraj in Brindavan. The first place I went was the Sri Rangam Temple in Brindavan. But that is the center of the Ramanuja Sampradaya. There was no Ayurvedic doctor there. And I started to look around and there's one person, Ramanuja Sampradaya. He said that he knows how to make Makaradhaj. So I didn't trust my decision. So I told Bhagavan Prabhu to come. Actually, I consulted with Tama Krishna Maharaj. Tama Krishna Maharaj suggested that Bhagavan Prabhu and I go to meet that person. And Bhagavan Prabhu felt that this person is a fake. He was not, like he was just wanting to take some money. Now, in the meantime, the noise, the news spread that about Prabhupada's dream. And in Calcutta, Adri Dharan Prabhu came across one Ayurvedic doctor. His name was Damodar Prashad Shastri, a man from Rajasthan. And so he was from Ramanuja Sampradaya. So when Adri Dharan Prabhu mentioned that, then he came. I mean, he brought this Ayurvedic doctor. And so he came and in the meantime, another thing happened actually. So one devotee from Delhi got this Makaradhaj from somebody. And so he brought the Makaradhaj. And like it was given to Shilpa Prabhupada. It was given quite ceremonially, like finally we got the Makaradhaj. One of our god brothers, he gave Shilpa Prabhupada one golden spoon, a spoon made of pure gold. And so Tama Krishna Maharaj gave that to Shilpa Prabhupada, the golden spoon. And Prabhupada kind of joked, will the medicine have special effect if we take it in a golden spoon? So anyway, Prabhupada took that medicine. He just took it once and he didn't want to take that medicine. And I very strongly feel that when Prabhupada spoke about poison, that is what actually happened. And Damodar Prashad actually confirmed it. He said that whoever gave this medicine, he made a big mistake without recognizing the condition of the patient he gave this medicine, which is very, very strong. And anyway, so Damodar Prashad actually came to Brindavan to prepare Makaradhaj for Shilpa Prabhupada. But he never spoke about Makaradhaj. He was actually concerned how to improve Shilpa Prabhupada's condition. And Adri Dharan Prabhu was staying in the same room with him. And he told me that at times at night, you'd see Damodar Prashad is sitting on his bed. And in dark. And when Adri asked, he said that he is actually so concerned about Shilpa Prabhupada's condition. And anyway, so then Prabhupada's condition did not, I mean, Prabhupada's condition actually deteriorated further. Prabhupada started to feel very uneasy. He got some pain and chest burn and such things. Damodar Prashad was trying to treat Shilpa Prabhupada. And, and it's around that time, Prabhupada actually spoke about poison. You all may have heard about it, that's why I just wanted to clarify to you all. One day, one Goriya Vaishnava, Bengali Goriya Vaishnava, quite young, came to Prabhupada. And he came to ask for some donation from Shilpa Prabhupada because he was building a temple. So Prabhupada told Tama Krishna Maharaj to give him some money. And so then the person was there and to him, Prabhupada was saying about poison. As if he had been poisoned. And now, he was a person whom we never seen. And Prabhupada also barely, rarely knew him, maybe early days, you have met him once or twice. But Prabhupada's intimate associate in Brindavan was Bhagaji, one local Vaishnava. And Prabhupada was very close to him. Bhagaji used to come every day, two, three times, especially at night, he would give a massage to Shilpa Prabhupada. And if Prabhupada felt that it was such a serious thing, then he would have told Bhagaji. Or, you know, like Tama Krishna Maharaj or other devotees who are close to him. But Prabhupada didn't tell anything to anybody, only to this. Actually shocked us because there was, Prabhupada was speaking to him in Bengali. And I was the one who understood and I was the one who translated it to Tama Krishna Maharaj. We all were shocked to hear that. And then Tama Krishna Maharaj at one point asked him whether Prabhupada felt that he has been poisoned. And Prabhupada said, no, I'm just talking like that. Which he meant that when somebody feels such pain, he feels like as if he has been poisoned, not that he has been poisoned. Anyway, I just wanted to mention that also to you all because either you may have heard about it or you will, you may hear about it in future. So this is the reality. At that time, everyone was praying to Krishna that Prabhupada would continue to stay. Everyone was hoping against hope that some miracle would happen and Prabhupada would continue to live. And then one day, Lokanath Maharaj came to Brindavan. And he just came back from a tour of Himalaya with a group of devotees. And he was, he was telling Prabhupada that he went all the way to Badrinath. In Badrinath, in Vasdev's cave, there is, in Badrinath, there is a cave where Vasdev is still present. And he offered Prabhupada's books there. And then he went further up. And then he mentioned that he went to the place where Bhima left his body. You know, like when the Pandavas got the news that, that Krishna left this planet, Yudhishthir Maharaj considered now, what's the point in staying in this planet anymore? So he just left his kingdom, gave his, gave the responsibility to Parikshiv Maharaj and he left home. And then all the four other brothers, Andropadi also left with him. And they left for Mahapristhan, great departure. They kept on walking and walking and walking without stopping, without eating, without drinking. And the first one was Droupadi to fall. Then Sahadev, then Nakul, then Arjun. And Bhima walked all the way up to, Bhima and Yudhishthir were the final two ones. All the way up to Badrinath, it's high up in the mountains. And there Bhima left his body. And Yudhishthir Maharaj continued. Yudhishthir Maharaj hid his body, the chariot came for him. Anyway, so when Lokanath Maharaj was speaking like that, at one time Shilpa Prabhupada told him that you have experience in taking Bulakart. So I want to do Pari Krama of Brindavan in Bulakart, so you make that achievement. Now, I just put two and two together. As soon as Prabhupada heard about, or soon after Prabhupada heard about Bhima leaving his body in Mahapristhan, now Prabhupada is talking about Pari Krama of Brindavan in Bulakart. I mean, Prabhupada's health condition was not at all prepared for that. And so I felt that Prabhupada is now going to leave his body in this way. In Bulakart, he would go out in Pari Krama. And so I went and told Tama Krishna Maharaj. And I was expecting that Tama Krishna Maharaj would say something. And, but he did. And but he didn't. Tamil Krishnamaharaj didn't say anything, Bhavananda Maharaj didn't say anything. And I was becoming very, very restless, impatient. And at one point, the devotees were planning around, devotees were standing around Shilpa Prabhupada. They are making the plans, how they would take Prabhupada in a bullock cart, parikrama. And then they were saying that at night, they will stop and make a tent for Prabhupada under a tree. And Prabhupada would spend the night there. I couldn't retain myself, contain myself, I just burnt it out. Do you know that Prabhupada can't even turn to his side? If we are not careful while we are helping him to turn to his side, because he used to get tired, lying on his back all the time. And if you are not careful, then he would feel pain. And you are planning to take him in a bullock cart ride through the Vrindavan roads. And you are planning to have him stay in, under a tree, in a tent, even in the room, in spite of the heater and two blankets, Prabhupada feels cold. Vrindavan at that time was quite cold actually. And then everyone stopped, everyone became silent. Then Prabhupada mentions that, okay, I'll ask Babaji Maharaj. Shilpa Krishnadas Babaji Maharaj was a very close associate of Shilpa Prabhupada, friend, intimate friend. So I thought that that's a hope, that I will tell Babaji Maharaj what's happening. And probably he could stop Shilpa Prabhupada from going. And so Babaji Maharaj was supposed to come in the evening. And I went to the kitchen to get something for Shilpa Prabhupada. And when I came back, then I saw that Babaji Maharaj is already there, sitting on a chair next to Shilpa Prabhupada's bed. And they were making plans to go out on that bullock cart, parikrama of Vrindavan. So my last hope was gone. So I got an idea, I went to the kitchen, made a plate of fruits and came to Shilpa Prabhupada and said, Prabhupada, I made some prashad for Babaji Maharaj. So Prabhupada said, okay, bring it here. So I said, no, Prabhupada, I kept it in the room next, next room. Prabhupada told Babaji Maharaj, so please go and take some prashad. So when Babaji Maharaj was taking the prashad, I told Babaji Maharaj everything about Lokanath Maharaj telling about Bhima's Mahapristhan, Prabhupada telling about bullock cart, parikrama, and there is no way Prabhupada can actually sustain that, that condition. So Babaji Maharaj then said, then he shouldn't go. I said, yes, Babaji Maharaj, you are the only one who can convince him not to go. Babaji Maharaj is so humble, he said, me? How can I tell him? So I said, Babaji Maharaj, you are our last hope. You see, you can well imagine, we are not in a position to tell Shilpa Prabhupada. And so then Babaji Maharaj got up, washed his hands, walked straight up to Prabhupada's room and just said, I heard everything and you cannot go. And then Babaji Maharaj, Prashil Prabhupada said, okay, if you don't want me to go, then I won't go. I immediately ran to give the news to Tamil Krishnamaharaj. And we were staying in the guest house. So as I was climbing up the stairs of this, in the guest house, I said, Tamil Krishnamaharaj and Bhavananda Maharaj, you are coming down. And I told them and they were actually becoming, they became so, so, I mean, they couldn't, they are actually planning that at night, Bhakti Sarub Damodar Maharaj would come to attend Shilpa Prabhupada. So at that time when no one would be around, they would come and tell Prabhupada not to go. But they couldn't wait till that, they became so restless. So they are just rushing down the stairs. And so I told them and we all ran into Prabhupada's room. And Tamil Krishnamaharaj just, he just spoke up like, Prabhupada, you've put us in such acute anxiety, we do not know what to do. And then Prabhupada turned towards Babaji Maharaj and told him, see how much they love me? And then he started to speak about Bhavananda Prabhu. Like in Mayapur, the Muslims attacked the temple and Bhavananda took the gun. That was a, uh, not a powerful single-barre gun, you know, it's a, what's it called? I mean, many things go out from, shotgun actually. And so few of the Muslims were injured. And the police came and arrested some devotees. And they arrested and took them to Navadip and made them walk through the streets with them chained up. It was so humiliating and while speaking like that, Prabhupada just started to cry. And so this is how Shilpa Prabhupada's desire to go to parikrama did not happen. And that's still a controversy, like maybe we should have let Prabhupada go. But you see, those of us who are serving Shilpa Prabhupada couldn't, could not let him go and leave his body in such a condition. Like doing in a bullock cart, in that road full of rocks and potholes. And then, as you know, after Govardhan Puja, Shilpa Prabhupada, one day, one morning, Damodar Prashad, the Ayurvedic doctor from Calcutta, he told me that Prabhupada didn't pass any urine. And if he doesn't pass any urine, then he will leave his body within fourteen hours. And so I told Tamil Krishnamaharaj. And he also mentioned that the only way that we can do is make him pass by putting a catheter. So we had a meeting in the room next to Prabhupada's and all the leading disciples of Shilpa Prabhupada were there and Tamil Krishnamaharaj asked one after another. And Prabhupada actually mentioned that nothing should pierce his body, not even a needle. And we felt that, you know, catheter penetrating his body did not be right. And so when it was decided then that we won't do that, we knew that now Prabhupada is going to leave his body. That was soon after the Mangalaratik, around quarter past five. And Damodar Prashad said that Prabhupada has about fourteen hours. And we can see how accurate his statement was. The, we opened up all the doors. Now Prabhupada's room was completely locked. Only a very few devotees were allowed to come to chant for Shilpa Prabhupada, that's also very softy, and those who sang, chanted nicely, only they were allowed to come in. And because many, many devotees were there at the time in Vrindavan. And so Prabhupada, we opened the door. The devotees filled in the room. Those who could not come in, they started to watch from the French window next to, in Prabhupada's room. And I do not know how the time went. So all the time I was by Prabhupada's bedside on the head. And I don't know how that fourteen hours went by. I didn't feel any urge to, to even adhere to nature's call. And I was giving Jamanu water in Prabhupada's mouth at that time. And then at around quarter past seven, Damodar Prashad mentioned that Prabhupada is not breathing. So I said, please check. So he took a cotton and placed it in front of Prabhupada's nose. It was not moving. I said, please use a stethoscope. And Damodar Prashad said, he just told me, let him go, don't call him back, don't pull him down, let him go. But by the time everybody understood what happened, I remember there was one of our godbrothers, he just started to cry loudly, he was the first one to start crying. Prabhupada's sister Pishima was there, sitting just next to Prabhupada's bed. And Pishima's, there was no expression on his, on her face. Just tears started to flow from her eyes, as if a water pot just broke. And devotees started to chant. Before that, yeah, one thing I also like to mention. Babaji Maharaj, Prabhupada was opening his mouth from time to time and now is pouring water. Babaji Maharaj said, see, he's still chanting. We couldn't hear anything, but Babaji Maharaj noticed that his tongue was vibrating. So that's how he could see that Prabhupada is still chanting. And in this way, Prabhupada left his body. And that night, we took Prabhupada to his vasas and in the temple room. Throughout the night, there was a keethan, devotees chanted keethan. Actually, that night only, some devotees thought, I don't know who, decided to put Prabhupada in samadhi that night only. But the news reached the Vrindavan, other temples in Vrindavan and the prominent temple heads sent a message that please have Prabhupada come and give darshan to all the deities in the temples of Vrindavan. They didn't say that let Prabhupada come and have darshan. They actually sent a message that let all the devotees, deities of Vrindavan have the darshan of Shilpa Prabhupada. And we did that, we took a parikrama and then Prabhupada was brought to the temple. Yeah, and this is how Prabhupada entered into his samadhi. And we can see like till the last moment, Prabhupada was completely Krishna conscious. His absorption was only at Krishna's lotus root, that was his only thought. And the last drop of his energy, he just used in serving Krishna. Translating Shiva Bhavatam. In that condition, what to speak of holding the microphone with his own hand? He didn't even have the strength to turn to his side. We had to actually help him to turn him to his side. And in that condition, he just continued to give his Bhakti Vedanta per port and translate Shiva Bhavatam. Shilpa Prabhupada, Kijai. Namavam Vishnu Padayam Krishna Prishtaya Bhutale. Sri Mate Bhakti Vedanta Swami Nityaami. Namastesh Harishthati Devi Gauravani Prachari. Nirvishesh Shunnavadi Paschata Deshataari. Shilpa Prabhupada, Kijai.
Hari Krishna. So I hope you all heard the last days how Prabhupada spent the time here. And like I said, there were only few devotees who had such close association of Shilpa Prabhupada. And we are very fortunate to hear from Maharaj like this. So now we'll hear a very special keethan, this is a short keethan, maybe ten, eleven minutes. And this keethan, his only Bhakticharam Maharaj performed at Shilpa Prabhupada quarters two years back. And the time was also, it was around seven thirty in the evening when Prabhupada left his body. So we will now hear the keethan, you can sing the keethan, it's a short keethan and then we'll come for the third part of our today's program. Rani Prabhu, can you play the keethan?
Namavam Vishnu Padayam Krishna Prishtaya Bhutale. Sri Mate Bhakti Vedanta Swami Nityaami. Namastesh Harishthati Devi Gauravani Prachari. Namastesh Harishthati Devi Gauravani Prachari. Nirvishesh Shunnavadi Paschata Deshataari. Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari. Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari. In nineteen seventy-seven, when Shilpa Prabhupada was spending his last days here, devotees used to come and sing keethan. That is how the devotees used to get Shilpa Prabhupada's darshan those days. Prabhupada was so sick that he couldn't give darshan to the devotees. But devotees, devotees used to come from all over the world. Shilpa Prabhupada wanted everyone to come at that time to Vrindavan. So they came from all over the world, but Shilpa Prabhupada couldn't spend time with them. So it was arranged.
So it was arranged that devotees in different shifts would come and sing for Shilpa Prabhupada, Hari Krishna Mahamantara. And the devotees used to sit there. Prabhupada used to lie on his bed and they used to sing. And the lights were very dim. Maybe we can do that. Let's try to go back to those days. So we can switch off the light, just keep some other lights, small lights and... Many devotees used to come and sing, but those days I couldn't sing because I was serving Shilpa Prabhupada all the time. So whenever I was here in this room, I used to just sit there. And whenever Shilpa Prabhupada needed something, you'd tell me. So since I was attending Shilpa Prabhupada, I never got a chance to sit there and sing for Shilpa Prabhupada. And many of the times, the devotees were singing so nicely. Some of the devotees were very sweet. Sometimes some devotees tried to play harmonium. And they were not so accomplished in playing harmonium. So Prabhupada made a rule that no harmonium. So one day, one devotee started to play harmonium. So Prabhupada told me, "Tell him not to play harmonium." Then Prabhupada, so I went and told the devotee. So Prabhupada asked, when he went back, Prabhupada asked, "Who was that?" So I said, "Prabhupada, it was Bharadaj Prabhu." Prabhupada said, "He can play harmonium." Bharadaj Prabhu was, probably you know him, he is the artist. And so he used to also sing very, very nicely playing harmonium. So Prabhupada allowed him to play harmonium. Can you switch off that light also? What about these two lights? Dharmatma, can you switch off those two lights off? Yeah. Okay. Now let's imagine that all the devotees are sitting there and singing. Those who are sitting there, they are singing actually. Prabhupada also used to like Hansuduta Swami singing Brahmsamhita. He used to sing Brahmsamhita. He had a very sweet and shrill voice. Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari. Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari.
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari. Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari.
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari. Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari.
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari. Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari.
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari. Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari.
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari. Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari.
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari. Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari.
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari. Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari.
Hare Krishna. It's a very long, very beautiful kirtan. We just played a small part of it. And we will post this video. The videos we will post after the class. You can watch them again, especially the kirtan is very, very devotionally enriching, the kirtan Mara sings. So now we come to the third part of our program. Where we've written that we want to meet Shilpa Prabhupada. So now we will hear from His Holiness Bhakti Charu Maharaj, how can we meet Shilpa Prabhupada? This is the last part, a very short video of three, four minutes.
So it is not a matter of being with Shilpa Prabhupada or having his association through his personal form. But what really matters is to take his instructions to heart. There had been many devotees who had been very close to Shilpa Prabhupada and had a lot of his association. But they drifted away after Shilpa Prabhupada left. Even when Prabhupada was here, many devotees actually left in spite of getting so much of his association. On the other hand, I have seen like there are devotees, those who although they did not have any physical association of Shilpa Prabhupada, they are so committed to Shilpa Prabhupada. They have such deep appreciation and love for Shilpa Prabhupada. So from that, we can see that association, it does not really depend upon the physical presence. What really matters is accepting his instructions, accepting his teachings and molding one's lives according to those instructions. So I know that feeling is there, that oh, had I have come one year earlier, I could have been with Shilpa Prabhupada. If I came ten years earlier, if I came twenty years earlier. That craving is there to be with Shilpa Prabhupada. But for them, I will say, "Don't worry about that. Shilpa Prabhupada is always there." And if you follow his instructions, if you mold your lives according to his teachings, then he will manifest himself to you. And what really matters is ultimately going back to where he is and associate with him. That option is open to all. You practice the process, you will achieve your spiritual perfection and then we'll go back to the spiritual sky. And in the spiritual sky, you will meet Shilpa Prabhupada. And Shilpa Prabhupada will introduce you to Krishna. Prabhupada will engage you in the service of Shilpa, Shri Krishna. So don't worry about those who did not get the association of Shilpa Prabhupada, physical association of Shilpa Prabhupada. They should not worry, rather, they should consider that this separation, this inability to not to meet Prabhupada personally, should, should be the impetus to inspire them to their spiritual life.
Hare Krishna. So this was the third, the final part of our program today. And I hope and pray that our attachment, our love, our gratitude towards Shilpa Prabhupada increases by every passing day. And that we could be, we pray that we can become an instrument in his hands and be attached to his lotus feet, birth after birth after birth. To remain in the association of the devotees, to serve these devotees. And let this be only aspiration we have, birth after birth after birth. So thank you so very much for joining us in this program. We'll end the session now. Namavam Vishnupadaya Krishna Prishtaya Bhutale. Shrimate Bhakti Vedanta Swami Nittinamine. Namastesh Harashati Devi Gauravani Pracharine. Nirvishesh Shunnavadi Paschattadeshatari. Vanchakalpatru Bhaischa Kripasindubhe Vacha. Patita Nam Paavne Bhuvvaishname Bhuvva. Jagat Guru Shilpa Prabhupada Kijai, Shilpa Prabhupada Disappearance Deekhi Kijai. Hare Krishna.